Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Wednesday, December 28, 2016. This time, we ask you all to join us in a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask for the approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes of the quarterly meeting with Superintendent Azar, November 9, 2016, be approved.
Seconded, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant 26A-17 in the amount of $75,408.14 payroll. Warrant 26B-17 in the amount of $20,043.67 and warrant 26C-17 in the amount of $46,187.26, the last two being count payable dated December 28, be approved.
Seconded, Mr. Chairman.
Again, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That motion carries unanimously. Correspondents? No correspondents. Move right along to announcements. Our trash bags, shops, disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's office. You may call (508) 669-6431 for more information. If you need fuel assistance this winter, call Citizens for Citizens, One Taunton Green, Taunton, Mass. at (508) 823-6346. Burning season is January 15, 2017 through May 1, 2017. Permits may be obtained at the Dyton Fire Station at 300 Main Street for $10. Please make your checks payable to the Town of Dyton. There is a winter parking ban in effect from November 1 through April 1 of each year. No parking is allowed on any street during this time. Landfill stickers are available for 2017. They are available at the transfer station during regular hours on Tuesdays and Saturdays. Payment by check only may payable to the Town of Dyton for $15. Registration is required for the vehicle being permitted. Stickers are not transferable. Please check the town website for updates during all snow emergencies. Town Hall will be closed on Monday, January 2 in observance of the holiday. However, trash and recycling pickup will not be affected during the week of January 2. Ladies and gentlemen, there was a lot of confusion this past week. Even though we made this announcement numerous times, your trash and recycling pickup will be done on the same day as it usually is. Has nothing to do with the holiday this week. Nomination papers for the annual town election will be available beginning January 3 at the clerk's office. The Green Communities Grant Committee is still accepting applications for members. The last date to submit a volunteer application is Thursday, January 12 at 4:30 p.m. The deadline for reports to be included in the 2016 Town of Dyton Annual Report is January 30, 2017, and that applies to all department heads and chairman of any of the committees. Special election for the police headquarters and communications center will be held Tuesday, January 10, 2017, at the Dyton Elementary School. Polls will be open 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. We have a couple more announcements. I'd like to announce the status of the town administrator position that has been passed on from the Town Administrator Search Committee, who screened and read 23 applications that were either mailed in or delivered to Town Hall. This committee did an excellent job screening. They narrowed the field down to seven. Out of that seven, they gave the selectmen their final two recommendations. After we looked at the two recommendations, this board, this committee that we had appointed, did they do diligence? They did exactly what was asked of them. We took the ball over after their recommendations were made. In the process, we then did background checks, reference checks, and their work history of previous jobs related to the town administrator's position. And unbeknownst to the committee that did all the work, we came up with some very negative results. We had asked this committee to give us three more, which would have been their third, fourth, and fifth choice for recommending town administrator potential. We did, again, background checks, reference checks, and work history on those three, and as of this point, we have disregarded all applications. The five top people that were being considered after search by Assistant Administrator -- Assistant -- Administrative Assistant, these five people in their previous work history had either been asked to leave their position, or were given severance pays to leave their position, or were fired. So we have disregarded and thrown out all applications, and will be posting again in the MMA Beacon publication for February 1. So we're back to the beginning, and just to explain our feelings on this, this board will not just hire any applicant who fills out an application for a town administrator. This being our first time, if we're not going to do it right, we're not going to do it at all. We're going to get the most qualified person, and we will check every aspect of these applicants. So that's where we stand with that. Next, under announcements, the elected official expiration terms. As was said a few minutes ago, there's nomination forms available in the town clerk's office beginning January 3, and you may pick up nomination papers for the following. For the Board of Assessors, for a three-year term, being vacated by Pamela Waller. Board of Selectmen, for a year of -- for a term of three years, being vacated by myself, Dean V. Cronin. Dyckney Hoover School District Committee, two openings, each for three years. The leaving candidates are Liza Kucha and Janice Terry. We have a one -- a five-year opening for the Housing Authority, being vacated by Jeffrey Alley. We have a three-year term for Parks and Recreation, being vacated by Heidi J. Swiss. Have a five-year term on the Planning Board, vacated by Joseph Figurito. A three-year term for Public Library Trustee, vacated by Ronald O'Connor. A three-year term for a seat on the Sewer Commissioners, and a one-year term for Town Moderator, being vacated by William McKeon Jr. When I say "vacated," means that their term has expired. It doesn't mean they're not going to run again. So anybody interested in Board of Assessors, Board of Selectmen, School Committee, Housing Authority, Parks and Rec, Planning Board, Public Library, Sewer Commission, or Town Moderator, January 3, pick up nomination papers at the town clerk's office. And the last announcement is the Great Alboro Taunton slash Taunton Home Consortium Public Outreach Meeting. I'll ask Selectman Gulak to fill us in on that.
This is the program that I've reported on periodically during the year. This program has federal funds and some state money available to first-time home buyers that meet certain income eligibility criteria. There are going to be informational meetings on January 5, 2017. The first one is 10:00 a.m. It will be held at the Middleborough Town Hall, 10 Nicholson Avenue in Middleborough, in the Selectmen's Meeting Room. The same day, January 5, 5:30 p.m., will be held in the Attleboro City Hall, 77 Park Street, in the public hearing room in Attleboro. I wanted to get this information out to you now because we will be having upcoming meetings, and they will let us know what kind of money is available. So this memo says, "Please join us to discuss how the Greater Attleboro Taunton Home Consortium should spend the federal funding that it will receive as a participating jurisdiction in program year 2017 from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Taunton's Office of Economic and Community Development as the lead agency for the consortium will host these meetings and briefly explain the guidelines of the home program. Participants will have the opportunity to discuss ideas and proposals and make suggestions on how those federal funds can most effectively be used to serve the housing needs of the region's low and moderate-income residents and neighborhoods. Applications for funding proposals will be made available at these meetings through the OECD," and again, January 5, 10:00 a.m., Middleborough Town Hall, January 5, 5:30 p.m., Attleboro City Hall. Each person, a couple buying first -- each first-time home buyers who meet the requirements are eligible for up to $10,000 in assistance. It could be closing costs or other related expenses. But last year, I believe, there were three homes purchased in Dyton, so three families were able to acquire a home, and I believe there were two properties that there was money available to do some repair work on. So again, this is very important, and if you're looking to buy a home in Dyton, this is worth checking into."
Thank you. Thank you, Nancy. Is there any old business? No old business. Under new business, first on the agenda, review, discuss, and act on an appointment of an acting fire chief. At this point, for everyone that's listening and watching, and especially to the people that's sitting in this room right now, this board is very fortunate to have the opportunity to appoint an acting fire chief for the Town of Dyton. This individual, correct me if I'm wrong, has had 23 years of service already with the Dyton Fire Department, been acting. He has been deputy fire chief for a little more than seven years, and at this time, this board has communicated with this individual and asked for his opinion on becoming the acting fire chief for the Town of Dyton. He has the experience, he has the knowledge, and he has the respect, as you can see, of the people sitting in this room. And I can officially say that this board is overwhelmed with his acceptance to take on this position. And at this time, I would like to have Michael D. McGee set up at our podium while I make Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, I'm going to ask my colleagues, as the Board of Selectmen as a whole, to please make their pleasure known.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Michael D. McGee acting fire chief of Town of Dyton.
Happily seconded, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
The only thing I would ask, Cable, if you can, would you please scan the room? I think we've got a almost-capacity crowd here tonight, but I think it's important that anyone watching this see the support that Acting Chief McGee has. Thank you.
Now, everybody's on a hot seat. Do you agree? Before we finalize this motion, I want to thank all the members of the Fire Department, Dyton Fire Department, and our representatives, Chief McDonnell and Sergeant Cronin, for being here, representing the Dyton Police Department. With that said, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mike. You have all the support from this board, you know that. And all the members, department heads of Town Hall, you know you have their support. Anything you need, you ask. And I want to especially, in this last kind of rough two to three weeks, I'd like to, before we turn it over to Chief McGee, I'd like to especially thank President of the Fire Department Union, and I ask him to stand up, Mr. Tom Adiris. Mr. Tom Adiris, acting fire chief. Michael McGee has done an outstanding job as far as cooperating with this Board of Selectmen in this rough time, with the situation that occurred. I've gained a tremendous amount of respect for both these gentlemen, and I expect everyone sitting here to give them the same respect that's due to them. I want to thank both of you very much.
Thank you.
Michael, say a few words?
I'm just looking forward to moving forward, that's all.
Move forward.
About it. It's a good group of guys they got here, so just looking forward to moving forward.
Anybody else like to say anything? Chief?
I just wanted to congratulate Mike. I look forward to working with him, myself, and as far as the police department is working together, to work together as two departments and to serve the town of Dyton.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
Anyone else? All for the first time, Chief, welcome aboard.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to thank everybody that came here tonight to support the chief, to show the people in the Town of Dyton that we have a fully functioning fire department EMS service. They didn't miss a beat. There were no services that weren't provided when they were called for. So thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Now, we do have quite a bit more business. If you have something you want to do, we want to thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
There goes our public.
Next on the agenda, review, discuss, and act on a resignation of a reserve police officer.
Can't all be good news.
We have received a memo from the Dyton Police Department. This was addressed to Sergeant Sean Cronin from Reserve Officer Derek Lamro. Thursday, December 22, 2016. "I am writing this to inform you that I have decided to respectfully resign from my roles as a reserve officer and part-time dispatcher for the Dyton Police Department. With a change of heart, I have accepted another position with a TSA, which I believe is in the best interest of my family. Since my appointment as a reserve officer in July, I have learned much about policing, dispatch, and the Town of Dyton. I appreciate the opportunity in becoming a member of your department. I have been honored and humbled by my experiences with the department. Reflecting on such experiences, I am filled with gratitude and wish nothing but the best going forward for yourself as well as the entire department. Respectfully submitted, Derek Lamro." I'll entertain a motion to accept this resignation of Reserve Officer Derek Lamro.
So moved.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda, review, discuss, and act on the Class 1, Class 2, and Class 3 dealers' license renewals. It's that time of year again. The calendar year is the term of all our used car license dealers, our new car license dealers, and our so-called junkyard license dealers. At this time, I would like to read the renewals that are put forth by the Board of Selectmen. A Class 1 license, the only one in town, to Lynn's Propane Trucks Corporation. Class 2 licenses are just a second-hand car or used car retail seller, and those that have been renewed for another year. Reese's Auto Sales Incorporated, Bristol County Auto Sales Incorporated, Kimball Enterprises, Judith Costa doing business as Costa's Truck and Auto Sales, North Dyton Garage Incorporated, Advance Automotive Repairs Incorporated, Thomas Spellman doing business as Medway Motor Sales LLC, also 508 Customs and Collision Incorporated. Those are our nine retail used car dealers in the Town of Dyton. Now, for the Class 3, our so-called junkyard license, renewals go to Borges Foreign Auto Parts Incorporated, Stephen Lewis doing business as L&amp;L Used Car Parts, and Bristol County Auto Incorporated. These will have all been sent out in the mail and will take effect to the calendar year, January 1 through the last day of December of each year. Oh, too fast. I'll entertain a motion to accept the renewals of our Class 1, Class 2, and Class 3 dealers' license.
So moved.
Seconded, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If there's a dealer out there, whether it's a one, or two, or a three, that did not hear their renewal read by the sport tonight, it may be because we're just waiting for some further information or something that needs to be taken care of before we can issue it. Next will be review, discuss, and act liquor license renewals. The following will be alcohol beverage licenses to be drank on the premises. These are called on-premise accounts. That means that you can go in, sit down, have a drink, have a cocktail, but it cannot be drank off the premises. It can't be taken out. These licenses are renewed to Giorgio Steakhouse Incorporated. This is also a vichyler's license, which cannot be drank on the premises. And those will be renewed to Mount Hope Village Liquors. That's a full liquor license. Medway Enterprises doing business as Root 44 Liquors. Avi -- oh, I'm going to have to ask Mr. Z to help me with this.
Abi Chalda?
Corporation, Mendoza's Liquors. Thank you.
I should say Mendoza's.
No, I want to say it right. Now for beer and wine, retail sales only, that cannot be drank on the premises. Licenses will be renewed to Almeida's Country Store, New Fast Mart, Winter Street Gas Corporation doing business as Mobile of Dyton, and two licenses of one all-alcohol to be drank on premises only, Taunton Yacht Club, and a common vichyler license for beer and wine that can be drank on the premises, Alice's Last Stop.
They got beer and wine?
Yes.
Haven't been there in a while.
So there are renewals for all liquor license and beer and wine licenses for 2017. I'll entertain a motion to approve all these licenses.
So moved.
Seconded, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That motion carries unanimously. Last item under new business is to review, discuss, and act on a open-meeting law complaint. I have here a copy of a complaint that has been filed with the Attorney General's Office in Boston against the Board of Selectmen. This open-meeting law complaint was filled out by a town resident, Mr. Christopher Andrade. That his complaint was a meeting that we had posted did not comply with the 48-hour posting deadline that's required to have a meeting. posting deadline that required it to have a meeting prior to the time and date of the meeting. The second violation filed was the agenda was amended to reflect that the personnel matter, the personnel matter was in regard to the fire chief, and because it was regarding the fire chief and the events unfolding, is the opinion that this was a bona fide emergency. In essence, what this violation was that we didn't post it 48 hours prior because of a special need of an emergency meeting to be called, which is defined by the Attorney I want to read in entirety the alleged violation. The Board of Selectmen for the town of Dayton posted with the town clerk on 11/29/2016 an emergency meeting to discuss a personnel matter. The meeting was set for 11/30, November 30, 2016, and the claim violation was this posting time did not meet the 48-hour notice, which is required for open meetings. The agenda for the emergency meeting is to discuss a personnel matter. The personnel matter in question does not rise to the level of a bona fide emergency as defined to be a sudden, generally unexpected occurrence, or a set of circumstances demanding immediate action. Three, the agenda is not posted with enough specificity to let the public know what the personnel matter is or which town personnel are being discussed. Four, the open meeting law requires that the Board of Selectmen should meet an executive session when they plan to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of all complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. And lastly, additionally, open meeting law requires that the individual to be discussed in such executive session shall be notified in writing by the public body at least 48 hours prior to the proposed executive session. This complaint was mailed in on 11/30, 11/30, 2016. There was a answer that was given from this board back to the complainant, Mr. Andrade, and our response for the five issues that he brought up was, one, the posting did not have to comply with the 48-hour posting deadline due to the fact that there was an emergency situation unfolding in the town of Dayton. Two, the agenda was amended to reflect that the personnel matter was in regard to the fire chief, and because it was regarding the fire chief and the events unfolding, it is the opinion of the Board of Selectmen that this was a bona fide emergency. Next criteria, an executive session was not required because the reputation, character, or professional competence of the fire chief was not discussed. And lastly, there will be an additional disciplinary hearing that will be held, which will be in executive session, posted in advance of the 48-hour deadline, and the fire chief will be notified of the meeting and his rights at that time. If you need any further information, please do not hesitate to contact this Board of Selectmen's office. This is the whole process as it developed. We had so many days to respond to Mr. Andrade's violation claims that he had turned into Boston to the Attorney General's Office. See if there's anything else that can devolve right now. If anyone has any questions, you may address them to Mr. Andrade or this board. We will await any decisions that may come from Boston from the Attorney General's Office. This is not a first that this board has had to go through this process. It was an emergency meeting that had to be dealt with in immediate fashion for the occurrences that happened, and it was done in an orderly fashion and by the open meeting law. If we have any further updates from the Attorney General's Office, we'll be glad to make them public. We're not here to hide anything. Public is, all this is public information. Open meeting law is a very severe topic among people in Massachusetts, municipalities, and forms of government, and we take it serious, and we try to uphold all of them. My colleagues have anything they'd like to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that this is, I'm proud to be on this board. For the simp, one of the many reasons I'm proud to be on this board is because it is in fact the most, at least in my recollection, the most transparent board that the town of Dayton has ever seen. We routinely post the meetings within seven days usually after any video-recorded public meeting, and if my memory serves me correct, the November 30th emergency meeting was posted the very same day that it occurred for all of the residents and the reporters who were interested to access and to view at their own leisure. So that's all I wanted to say about that.
Okay. Thank you.
As I recall also, there were a number of attempts made to get the word to Anton K. Roderick Jr. that there was going to be this meeting. I believe there was voicemail and text sent. Some calls didn't, no calls, no messages were returned, but there were several attempts to let him know the meeting was taking place. The other thing is that town council was consulted about this matter, and I will say from my own personal experience, I've only been through two emergency meetings in my entire life. One was as a selectman shortly after I was elected the last time, and one was at the school department many years ago. And I feel comfortable that the action taken by the board under the guidance of town council was appropriate. We were dealing with a very serious condition in a public safety department. You don't have departments of this nature operating without leadership. So I think what we did was correct, and we'll wait to see what the Attorney General says.
Thank you. And just closing, without looking for any pats on the back or anything, but between myself and my fellow colleague, Mrs. Gulat, we have gone through an awful lot of meetings, whether it be Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, so many different committees that we've both been on. I, as my six-year member of this Board of Selectmen, we have averaged anywhere from 120 to 150 meetings per year, which all have to be posted, all have to meet the criteria of the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. Yet they even had my hand slapped once, and I'm proud of it. And again, Mrs. Gulat is in the same boat. We're very open. We do adhere to this policy. We take pride in making sure that everything is out in the open. Again, when you look at all the meetings, and there's never been one violation filed that was, that went against this Board of Selectmen in the almost six years I've been here. It goes a long way. So I am actually awaiting an answer from the Attorney General's Office, and we'll be glad to convey that, those opinions onto you people, the townspeople of Dayton. Thank you. Next reports, under reports, I have a report on the Bristol County Budget Meeting that was attended by Selectman Gulat.
Each year, the cities and towns in Bristol County are called upon to attend a meeting at Superior Court in Totten for the purpose of acting on the upcoming fiscal year budget. Normally, we do this in June, but the county was being audited this year, and as a result of that, an audit recommendations, it was not until December 15th that the meeting could be held, again, following recommendations of the audit. So we were just about six months into the fiscal year before we actually got to approve the budget. But anyhow, we did go through the entire budget, and the total county budget is $20,264,536.92. Included in that budget is an operating budget for the Aggie School, and that Aggie School operating budget is $8,907,498, and the capital budget for the Aggie School is $128,869.14. I believe that capital budget may be a loan payment for the Center Street sewer line. I know that they have a large expansion planned, but that's not at the stage yet when borrowing would take place. So anyhow, the budget was passed. This is county government, which includes not only the school, but the court system, the registry of deeds, the printing facilities, and the like as far as all the services that are provided by the county. And that budget was passed unanimously.
Under acknowledgements, we, tonight, we have an anonymous donation to the Council on Agent in the amount of $88. I have a motion to acknowledge.
So moved.
An $88 donation.
So moved.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Aye or none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. I have two anonymous donations to Primetime. The first being in the amount of $100, and the second one in the amount of $30.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we acknowledge a donation of $100 to Primetime.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. And the final donation of $30 to Primetime.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we acknowledge a donation, an anonymous donation, the amount of $30 to Primetime.
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Again, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Public input. Well, we did have a full house, and we are now open house.
Buy our loads of them.
Do my colleagues have anything they'd like to bring up?
Just blessed that we have Mr. McGee as our acting fire chief, and to have such a unified, wonderful, fabulous fire department.
I will again say it was great to see the support tonight for the new acting chief. It's been a difficult past couple of weeks. In retrospect, it has been a good year, in my opinion. I believe a lot has been accomplished. I know we've had the, let's say we get some bad press. My opinion, certainly not deserved. Part of that bad press was due to bad reporting and not reporting facts. But I look back and see the many wonderful events that took place in this town, town employees getting involved with charitable endeavors to raise money, whether it was the MDA booths that the firefighters use to collect money, the Pan Mass Challenge, the bike ride that comes through town every year that literally raises millions, I think it was 46 or 47 million this year, for a two-day ride. The Fun of the Cow Chip Festival, although at Ford Buckets, we had a Memorial Day ceremony in the pavilion, and Rehabith came over. The Arts Festival that occurred. So many of these events are connected to the Lions Club, which, between Lions Clubs and the Lions Club and Eagle Scouts, I don't know what this town would do if we didn't have both of those groups. Both of the scout troops have produced more eagles this year, and as you know, we have projects in the works right now where these young men will be getting their, completing their program and actually attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. The, as I said, the charitable endeavors, the latest one being the Stuff the Cruiser, remarkable outturn when you consider there wasn't really advanced publicity. Both the police and fire departments, I'm sure there were thousands of dollars' worth of toys, and there were hats and gloves and things of that nature that were also purchased to help needy people. It's, the lights on this year, having the little train come back, we have a new train, and to have that little train now back in the parade, and hopefully next year, we'll have the rest of that equipment, I'll call it, Santa Claus with the reindeer and the sleigh. But there was so many, I feel so many good and positive things that have happened that in spite of some of the bumps in the roads that we've had and that we'll continue to deal with in the new year, I think it was a very productive year. People have commented to me about the, what has been accomplished, the working together of the board members here, the interest in taking on certain tasks, whether it's a committee or a new study or a grant that we want to go after. As, again, I will say, a lot of positive came out of this year, and I want to thank the townspeople for their support. I'm at the end of the phone, or an email, or however you want to contact me. So I'm looking forward to the new year, and I think that we will continue to move ahead and get things accomplished. I'm feeling very comfortable now about the status of the operation of the fire department, and again, the support that was exhibited here, the support that was exhibited outside of the Grange Hall on Stuff the Cruiser Day, very positive. I'm looking forward to town offices moving into the lower level at Town Hall, and also, I'm looking forward to that upstairs hall, the first-floor hall, being used by the town of Dayton, hopefully for small meetings. Who knows? Maybe we'll even have town meetings there. Maybe we'll have elections there, once it's completed. But the progress on that office space has been going very well, and I can thank Mr. Aggie for that, the building commissioner, Mr. Tom Ferry, the highway superintendent, whose at least three men have been over there regularly, who have carpentry skills. So we're looking forward to the completion of that and hope to have an open house so that the townspeople can come and see what has been done to provide additional office space for town employees and to provide town services. So I will end with best wishes for a Happy New Year to everybody.
Selectman Z.
I just wanted to say Happy New Year, and the next time we'll see you, it'll be 2017.
And my final comments for the night. I want to thank all the people that were in this room tonight. I think it's a sign of great things to come as far as the two most important public safety departments in this town, obviously the two most expensive budget-wise, with the help of our Highway Department. We have a nucleus of tremendous services that are being performed, and my hat's off to every individual, whether it's Fire Department, Police Department, or Highway Department, for their continuous, continuous efforts on a daily basis. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank my two colleagues on each side of me. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank my two colleagues on each side of me. Newest selectman, Mr. Zografos, in his two-thirds of a year as being on board, is starting to get the wheels turning. He's moving very fast. He's picking up a lot about town government that is going to be very important in his future. And of course, Mrs. Gulat, who is, seems like she's been around forever.
I was going to say.
No, I did not say that. It's a pleasure to be able to lean on such an individual, get her take and her opinions on so many things on a daily basis. And I thank them both for all the support and the help that they've brought to this board. And I've said it before, and I'll say it again, this board has accomplished an awful lot. There's a lot more work to be done. I plan on, you know, pushing the reins and slapping the backside a little harder until at least April and get more things done. With that said, I want to wish everybody a very, very Happy New Year, but most of all, make it a very safe year. Be conscious of wherever you are, your surroundings, keep alert, and may God bless everyone. Thank you. Thank you, Cable. Good night, ladies and gentlemen.
One last comment. We don't want to leave out Mrs. Brady, because without Karen, without Karen, we would not function very well. So thank you, Karen.
I'm sorry, Karen.
I think she's a little under the weather tonight, so thank you. Rain, rain, shine, illness, ailment, she's always here, and we appreciate it, and we need you, and we definitely appreciate all your service to the town.
Thanks.
Again, good night, Cable, and good night, ladies and gentlemen. See you next year.
Happy New Year.